I now call our city council meeting to order. If you would be so kind to stand for our prayer, we have Pastor Philip Horvath with RCC Church here to lead us on in prayer.
May I pray, ma'am? Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together and to discuss the business of Chippely. We thank you for these leaders in our community. We ask you would just continue to bless them and guide them as they make decisions to make our place, our community, a better place to live. God, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and we pray that you would be honored and glorified through this time in Jesus' name. Amen.
Attention Salute Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we approve the agenda, we do have one item to add. That's gonna be under the Agenda Item Number Six. Proposed annexation Water Sewer Services, South Boulevard, Kirkland Road. Number six. Attorney Jordan, do I need to add this on here or are you gonna cover this in your section? Okay. All right. Okay. Then I'll just mention what I've received under the department's report. Do I have a motion to approve with the addition?
So moved.
Second.
Moved second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number D is Citizen Request. The City of Chippely welcomes you to this meeting. This is a time set aside for the citizens of Chippely to address the city council. This is not a question and answer period. It is not a political forum, nor is it a time for personal accusations and derogatory remarks to or about city personnel. If you would like to address the city council, please state, please raise your hand. To speak, state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to no more than three minutes per the Florida statute 286.0114. To ask a question via the phone, dial star nine and wait to be recognized then unmuted. If you are attending via webinar, there will be an on-screen option to ask a question during the public comment portion of the meeting. Your participation is welcomed and appreciated. Do we have anyone here in the audience? If not, is there anyone? On the webinar? Then we'll move to Agenda Item Number E. Approval of Minutes for our regular council meeting on June 10th, special council meeting on June 26th.
I move approval. We accept both June 10th and 26th minutes.
Second.
Moved second. Call for discussion? Any discussion? If not, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none. Motion carries. We'll move to our departmental reports. The first one is Attorney Jordan. Do you have anything outside of the report that you submitted?
Uh, we should have, um, Southern Judge Corrigan Friday on the Gulf of State. Melchior Ripson, Judge of course. You guys have a good night? Let's try it again.
Please do. The only other thing is we'll submit her letter. She said prior to the budget time to discuss an increase in fees. Anything else for Attorney Jordan? If not, um, the Fire Department report.
Ariana.
Thank you.
Pretty steady past couple of months. Calls are down right now. The weather's had a lot to do with that. We spent a lot of time training recently. Update on September 1st. They're saying possibly September now to do the final inspection on it. So hopefully a couple of months and we'll have it in service.
Awesome.
Other than that, everything's going smooth and good.
Your average percentage has gone down because of calls. Is that just because it's the summer and people are gone?
No, normally this time of year is the busiest time of year. I think this rain has had a lot to do with it.
The number of responders? Number of responders?
Number of responders.
Because of summertime? I mean, you're not worried about it at all?
Nah, not as of now. A lot of it has to do with ball season and summertime or whatever.
That's what I figured. Just wanted to ask you this.
Good report. I like that.
Appreciate it.
And thank you on last month for all you did at the Panhandle Watermelon Festival. Our team out doing what they do best on that Friday night of concert is making sure that we have good food.
Everything went really smooth on our side. Everybody worked hard, so no complaints there.
Good. Anything else from council? No, thank you. Code enforcement report?
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Been pretty active the last couple of months. If you all have any questions about the report or any cases?
No movement on Holly Avenue still. For now.
Yes.
1278.
Looks like we are working on the special for Southern judgment on that. So we're probably three months out.
Close.
Actually, this has been going on a long time with that particular property. A long time.
Any other questions for Attorney Jordan? On that one? If not, I did notice an increase in excessive grass and I know because of the rain. I know our code says it's a certain level, uh, is it? I don't know. Twelve inches? Twelve inches? Yeah, so with getting rain every day, it's kind of been abnormal for us to keep grass cutting on the norm. So, um, that kind of explains why if you come by mine today, you'll probably cite me because I'm having to cut it every week. If the rain keeps going, it's really getting to be actually a chore to keep it.
I can't keep up with all the, there's a lot that's even addressed.
Grateful for some leniency there because some can't afford to cut, but every two weeks or so.
Mary Council, we are actually making a little bit of a change to the way that we handle cases. We're going to issue for cases such as this a, um, letter, basically a courtesy letter to let them know that, you know, before we actually start the case. Because there's a lot of times that we can get things complied with before the courtesy letter timeframe has even expired versus doing the first letter, putting seven days in it and somebody can't get it accomplished in seven days. I mean, most people can't get anything done in seven days. So Tamara and I have been working on that to come up with a plan to put that in place and we should have that in place in the next week.
Very good. Ms. Mark.
Very good. Great work. Anything else for code enforcement? If not, then we'll go straight to planning and zoning.
That's also been very active. We had a planning zoning hearing. Yes. On the agenda tonight for approval? Yes, we just picked up. Any questions?
I have no questions. Any questions from the board? If not, thank you for all that you do. Appreciate you. Police Department? Chief Richter?
We also had a busy month.
How?
Watermelon Festival went off without hitch for the most part. I was not really concerned, but I was monitoring the fact that only two of my patrol officers this go around that participated in the watermelon festival and everything went really well. You got a report with the numbers from the month. They're starting to be pretty consistent at that level. That being said, I would like to mention that I pulled the numbers a week or so ago and we're sitting at about a total of 5,500 calls for service for the first six months of the year. With that, we wrote 455 reports, 2,378 warnings, 565 citations and 45 traffic crash reports. Just as comparison, this time last year, um, we had 300, just under 400 reports we had written. 965 warnings compared to the almost 2,400 we have this year and 115 citations compared to the 565 so far this year. The biggest thing I'd like to point out is the reduction in traffic crashes. Right now, we're at 45. Or as of June 30th, we're at 45. This time last year, we were at 91. The previous couple of years, we're also sitting in the 90 range. So we're monitoring that to see if in fact the increase in traffic enforcement is helping reduce the traffic. We are currently down two positions and I've got one out on paternity leave, just had a baby. We started the hiring process for one. He's coming to us from Marianna and we have been talking with an individual from Polk County who worked for Polk County Sheriff's Office for about 15 years that is interested in working for our agency. He is closing on his house on Friday, so that was a big factor on whether or not he could be employed with us obviously. Fourth of July went pretty well. It was loud. We had, we had more, more people in town shooting fireworks off than I think we ever had, but they were all going up and not down the street, so that was great. We did have, I think it was four calls for service on the Fourth of July. Two of those, I wouldn't really say were necessarily a complaint about the fireworks themselves, rather they were concerns about the smoke surrounding their house. They were afraid there may be something on fire, which there wasn't. So we rectified that issue, but all in all, it went really well. Any questions?
Counsel?
No.
Thank you. Abbott Horvath?
I'm doing all right, Sealy?
Yes, sir.
Everything's been going pretty good and doesn't work. So like everybody else said, with the rain going, we are definitely falling behind on grass, but we're getting caught up.
The cemetery. They do a good job with it, but when you look in the, just drive in, but when you go off down a little bit, they're slacking. We had a big funeral here Monday, last Monday, and when you're standing there, you see people looking around. I had one man said that the city's just not doing as good a job as they used to. I said, well, we have a contractor and I said, I'll be glad to pass that along. And at the actual grave where they did, the mower came up, made a turn and left all the other grass there. And that just happened to be the place where he was gonna be buried. So I went and cleaned it off before the funeral, but.
Was that north end?
South end, third one on the right. But just, and so after that, I drove around and it just, the farther away from the middle you get, the, you know, the more slack the work is, it seems like. And they're definitely not spraying, that's obvious.
Uh, yeah, I'll make sure they get that down.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. You have a question, sir? Do you want to state your name?
Larry Zizou, 35 Maple Street. I wanted to speak in reference to cleaning out the ditches in the city of South Boulevard. It's hard to explain, but I understand from engineering that in my past that amount of dirt that has settled in the bottom of those ditches should be cleaned out for volume for prevention of flooding households around.
South Boulevard is a county road and the rideaway's on the county, so that needs to be.
Well, I spoke to them and they said it's your job and I spoke to you, um.
So what we can do, Mr. Larry, is if we could get with Mr. Guy Lane after this meeting and we can have a discussion with you in regards to that, then we can make it clear.
I would think lightly that he, if you could give him permission or get a grant to possibly get him some more employees and hands to necessarily manage what you need him to do.
Your comments is noted.
Thank you.
Recreation Department?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
We have wrapped up baseball and softball. We have kicked off our adult black football league, which is going good. I'm gonna check it out a couple of times. Watermelon Festival went good. We have soccer coming up. Registration will start near the end of August. New employees doing good.
Awesome. So facilities look great.
Thank you.
Is that where most of your time is going right now?
Very good. Any other questions from council?
The splash pad hours were extended until 8:00 PM. All week long except for Wednesday when the splash pad is closed through the summer.
Yep, saw that.
We're not having any issues with splash pad or vandalism or anything like that?
Praise God.
Yeah.
We're just grateful we have one.
Yep.
Very good. No more questions? Thank you. What are utilities?
Jimmy had to leave unexpectedly this afternoon. Everything's okay that I know of, but he did have to leave, so we weren't able to get anybody else here in time to do this report.
That's fine. He has a report in there for anything they can forward to you as well. Finance Department? Ms. Jamie?
Hey there, Ariel.
Great, thank you. We have your report as well.
We do. Any questions?
The way the council looked down, that's good.
Yeah.
I don't know when, I've seen them in the 300s.
Thank you for doing a good job.
Patty couldn't do that, so.
Thank you, Ms. Jamie. Final is City Administrator's Report. And under your report, you have grant information. I think Mr. Melvin also has some updates on some grants for us as well under your report.
Okay, would you like for him to?
Whichever one wants to go first.
Go ahead.
Just want to tell you a little bit about our grants and then some upcoming grants.
Thank you.
So just some of our current grants. The Griffin Road Box Boulevard, we have that out for bids right now. That involved Lorette Gas Transmission coming in and having to relocate their line, which is the main line that serves all the gas around here. So we're very happy that they were able to come and do that and we were able to pay for that relocation with grant funds. First bank project, the first phase of the, I guess, second phase, first phase with demolition, the second phase of destabilization. I think we've got a substantial completion inspection on that on Friday. And then we've got about $170,000 left and so we're hoping they'll just let us change order with the current contractor. If not, then we'll put that out for bids and wrap that project up over there. So the pretty stuff that's coming next.
It looks good, except there's one thing above the vault, you know, that was supposed to, your son came and talked to us and it looks like it's almost scouring away with the water. Is that gonna? I looked at the pictures I had taken last year to now, it's really, of course, we've had heavy rains and part of it has fallen off.
Yeah, so we'll put a seal code over all that wreck.
Yeah, I didn't know when that was.
But I had noticed that. I'll go by there after.
Check it out, because it's, we've had some bad rains and it is certainly, it's fall, but that's what it does.
So I'll go by and check on that.
Thank you.
I think we've got some energy grants for the wastewater treatment plant. Have you got that agreement yet?
We just received it.
Just received it, so that'll be moving forward as well. Pecan Street and some of those drainage projects are moving on. Kind of wanted, just quickly, I wanted to point out the legislative session is completed this cycle and fortunately you've got some funding out of that as well. But, so they'll roll into the new grants very quickly and so we've given a list of those grants for you to, in a brief description, for you to think about those. The little QR codes there if you want to go to the website of each grant, but feel free to reach out to us and talk about any of these that you may want to look at or find for that we can help you with. Particular note is the Community Planning and Technical Assistance Grant. That is due August 1st. It only takes a letter and so, I don't know if y'all have, you currently have one, I think from last year for the downtown part of it, but it can be used for any kind of planning purposes or economic development or anything like that. And all it takes to submit for that is kind of a letter, a lengthy letter, but just a letter application, but just due August 1st. And I talked to the staff at Rural Infrastructure today. They think the grant cycle opened for that August the 1st on it and they'll probably be due in September. And, you know, real possibility of doing that, you were six of the sets over Heath and all. I think we had them on that of getting that grant last year for rural infrastructure, so there'll be more grants. We've got the five million set aside for our six counties and I think it's 17 million in addition to that that we're still eligible for. So those are some good ones that are upcoming, but just want to make you aware of that. If you want to look at the websites to get more information on them, if you got any questions, any way we can help you on that, we'll be glad to do it.
Yeah, the municipal Scott wasn't listed. Do they still have the municipal Scott?
Yes, there is. There is.
Because it wasn't on.
Those will probably be due, Rodney Moore, the expert on those, probably due in, did he say in March? Those as well. I think March is kind of the time, I don't know, all those, you know.
Thank you.
So many road projects like that that we can help you with. Some of those, you know, you need to start working on them sooner because they're carrying and things like that to get them in the pipeline sooner than later is helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Melvin. Ms. Penn?
Um, just real quick, I'll go over a couple of the grants that we have and the status of them. We were waiting for the 2025 FEMA Technical Assistance Grant to open back up and it did open back up and we did get a grant submitted for G I S, to purchase G I S mapping software and contracted in combustible gas detection equipment. So now we're just waiting for approval. We have not been successful with that grant the last couple of years. I spoke with them and they said that it's just a very competitive grant and to continue trying. So we're going to continue trying. Mr. Melvin went over the bid and drive improvements that has, that's actually getting ready to bid this week or next week, maybe next week? And for construction. The Old Chippely City Hall Phase 2, the final report is on the agenda for approval tonight. Ms. Lopez is here to discuss that with the council. The City Hall Generator FEMA Grant did not get approved for funding. That grant was written, at the time it was written, the application, it was for the purpose of utile, because basically this building, we were saying that this building is utilized for emergency operations and there's not a big enough, there's not enough money that we utilize for that purpose. So the benefit was not enough for them to fund the project, which is what we had a feeling of from the beginning. But we tried just to see if we could. Next time, there may be other generators that we can apply for through that same program. The legislative appropriations, the police vehicles and equipment that we thought we got funded for did not get approved. So Chief Richter and I are actually going to work to try and come up with small alternatives to try and figure out what to do as far as vehicles go. And we will get back with the council, hopefully by budget time. The Pecan Street resurfacing did get approved, the legislative appropriation, so we should receive a grant agreement on that the next few months probably. And after the council approved the submittal of the Old Chippely City Hall construction for the roof, we did submit that grant. Heather did that submitted, so that's been submitted. We'll just wait for approval. And we also applied for the cops hiring grant program. So we're just waiting to see if we will get funded for that with the two additional police officers.
Any questions from council?
Now, the only thing, there wasn't a CRA report. I know we don't, we don't have a CRA director yet or anything.
Not at this time.
Okay. Because last month there was a report, but not this month, so.
Yes.
Philip, will you make sure that the council get a copy of that report this week via email? Thank you.
Yeah, because it's interest of the buildings there next to Chippely Station that look so bad. So we need to be updated on where we are with those, the nuisance buildings.
Well, and I believe Jared's out of town right now. He's the one that was checking into the buildings for me. So, um, Mr. Horvath, do we know, will he be back in a couple of weeks or a month? So I can get an update on that and get back to the council and let you know.
All right, thank you.
All right. We will move to our consent agenda. We have three items listed under the consent agenda. The request for, the first one is Request for Development Order and Certificate of Appropriateness, 1414 Main Street. The second agenda item is Resolution Number 25-39. That's the Firefighters Assistance Grant. And the third agenda item is the Resolution Number 25-40 FDPSRF, Clean Water Loan Reserve Repayment Account. Do we want to take this consent, these consent agendas as a whole?
I'll make a motion that we take them as a whole. Can we have discussion?
You can. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for discussion? Discussion time?
Yeah, number one, the, um, the plans for that Rivertown Community Church, they call for milled asphalt, which for the parking area, I know Mr. Melvin's presented that, but it's in an area that's previously been permitted for, is a stormwater treatment area. And there's no lighting in the back. And there's, I'm just mentioning this because these are the things that stuck out at me. And they're also going to plan. And they're also going to plant trees in the front in the areas, but there are light poles there, so they're going to have the same problem we had downtown where the trees cover the lights, so those issues are just a concern to me.
Mr. Melvin, do you want to comment, address those concerns?
Sure. Of course, the project is ongoing, and R C C is building out on a cash basis, so they're, so the milled asphalt is area eventually get paid, but they want to utilize milled asphalt to begin with. There's overflow parking over there, but there will be, we don't have it in the plans, but there will be a lighting plan, obviously, for that, that area in there.
Is there a deadline for that eventually? Because I've seen a lot of things that eventually are going to be done and never get done.
Yes, and Phillip may have more insight on it than I do, but, you know, I think the goal is try to be operational by Easter of next year, and so within six months after that, they'll probably pay the parking lot, the lighting will go again when it opens, yeah, because that's a safety issue. Although that, that milled asphalt primarily is morning service, it's staff that parks over there, and so it really won't be used too much at nighttime anyway, but there definitely will be.
Yeah, but when you have milled asphalt and you have the rains we had, you know you're going to have potholes wherever it's, wherever the drain, it's going to take the milled asphalt away, and then they're going to complain to the city about flooding.
Yes.
So that's why I'm against, you know, having it at all with milled asphalt.
And, you know, I think the facility meets the code requirements without the additional parking area, but what the R C C likes to do is have their staff park, so they leave the prime parking places available for visitors, so it will primarily be staff parking over there.
I'd sure like to see a timeline for it to be, you know, paved, because I just don't like that milled asphalt.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, they're calling, it'll form a good base material.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be easy to pay.
Unless it's not graded, it's certain.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they can get milled asphalt for free from Anderson, Columbia, so that's some of the motivation there as well.
Don't come back and say, talk about potholes.
Any other questions? Any other questions from council? If not, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none, motion carries. Agenda item number one under H, the first one is RFQ number 2025-03.
RFQ number 2025-03, Real Estate Master Agreement and Task Order Number One for Elite Realty. The council approved the award of the real estate consultant last month, and we now have the attorney contract in agreement, a master services agreement, and then Elite Realty will do a, any properties that we're going to sell, they will do a vacant land contract for sale with the costs associated with it that we will bring to council for approval.
Who does the appraisals?
That appraisal for the property that we are actually trying to sell has already been done. It was done last year for the Oswald property.
So appraisal's, so it's a year old?
It might be a little less than a year old, yeah.
But each appraisal, so if the master services agreement is an umbrella, then each property that we list that the lead is going to have to offer under that standard R R, I guess, the Florida bar, or realtors exclusive listing agreement. So it has all the standard conditions that you normally have to do appraisal conditions are normally negotiated, you know, which is getting you all, or if you wanted, in a case of what you list, your property. If that's something that you want to do with team lead, you might even want to add an R for appraisal services.
Well, you don't want to go off an appraisal, it's a year old.
Well, I don't think it's quite a year old. I don't remember what month it was, so it's not a year old.
She's not going to purchase a property that's more than a couple of months appraisal, it's a couple of months old.
Yeah. I'd have to look back at the document.
Ms. Birch, do you happen to remember?
I don't know right now, but I don't take it as if it's not solved.
Yeah.
To put that appraisal, this would for a year, you know, go back six months to a year for comps, this particular praiser, I thought was pretty generous on the comps, and honestly, the market has declined since the appraisal stopped, so I feel like the list price being appraisal prices in the approach.
Well, that's why I didn't want it to come back and surprise somebody if it comes in lower, because the appraisal's older. I mean, I used to do that, so I understand it, yeah. So.
And we know too that the praiser, when you have a buyer, a buyer can get the appraisal, and that's either a review for that person.
Right.
So that can change a little bit, that a buyer can contract, that's a problem.
Okay, thank you.
And at this time, we did, we do not have a lot of properties to sell. That is, that property is the main reason we did this, so we would have time if something came up to do what we needed to do to get an appraisal done.
So we see the Davidson property going up for sale within this next calendar year?
That's, that's what this.
They called it Oswald. That's what confused me the whole time.
Yes.
And just as we get a paddle in on, I think that's on that one.
Oswald Road.
It's not Oswald.
Sale of the Oswald Road property is the Davidson property, right?
The Oswald Road property is the Davidson.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that's where I was confused, because we were talking Oswald Road.
Yes.
That's what I thought it was, but it's like, okay, never heard it.
Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved second. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number two, RFQ number 2025-04.
RFQ number 2025-04, Agreement for Professional Services Rural Infrastructure Fund Grant, Mont McDonald Florida LLC. This will approve the agreement with Mont McDonald Florida LLC for the professional engineering services for Brickyard Road Gravity Design in the amount of $162,196. The total grant is $295,000, so it falls well within the amount of funding that we've been appropriated.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Moved second. Call for discussion, any discussion? Not all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number three, Code Enforcement Fines, 566 MLK.
566 MLK, yes. The property located at 566 Martin Luther King Drive, the property owner is David Rolak. The property has been accruing fines of $50 per day since May 3rd of '24. The total legal fees at this time are $1,921.20, and the total fines are $40,450 as of May 31st, for a total of $42,371.20, and Mr. David Rolak is present to discuss this property with the council.
He has someone here with him. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is George Robinson, my address is, so we're in Chippewa, and I'm here to discuss David Lorenzo Rolak, property 566 Martin Luther King Drive. And a brief summary of how I got involved in this. David Rolak was talking with a friend of his, and my daughter happened to be present, and it was about a water bill that was due and a sewer bill, and he was told that he had to pay it. So we took the bill down to City Hall, and we talked with Deanna, I think her name is, and she removed it and closed out the fines, so that's how I got involved in it. And then, on the same day, we asked to speak to the code enforcement officer to see if there were other issues that would prevent David from getting a module home or building a home on his property. So we were told that David had purchased a shed, had put it on his lot without a permit. My daughter and I talked to David and told him to get a permit on 6/5, which is the next day. David went to City Hall, purchased a permit for the shed, and brought it to us. And then we decided to talk to the code officer on the same day to see if there were other issues with David's property. She told us David was being fined $50 a day. She gave us a copy of the magistrate's meeting with David Robinson, sorry, Rolak, I keep saying Robinson, Rolak, and Jalisa Bryant, which was on April 25th, 2024. In the highlights of that meeting, on February 23rd, 2024, property was inspected and found abandoned material and awful vehicles, junk, and trash throughout the property. Pictures were taken. The property owner was given seven days to bring the property into compliance. On March 11th, 2024, property was inspected and still not in compliance. On April 24th, 2024, property was inspected and still not in compliance, and pictures were taken. And the penalties from the meeting with the magistrate on April 25th, 2024, the owner had 30 days from the audit date to remove the abandoned material, junk, and trash, and bring the property into compliance with the code, to already fine $50 a day until the property is in compliance. I don't know who explained Mr. David, but I'm sure he did not understand this. On June 6th, this year, 2025, after we got the paper from the code officer, we took it to David, and he was not aware of the fines. David said that the code officer called him that day for the first time and told him about the fines. My daughter and I went back to City Hall to see the code, where we were speaking with the city manager. We were told by Sherry that she was in a meeting, and she would get back with us for the day. Sherry took my phone number, and she said that she would have her call me. On 6/9, Sherry called and said that the city manager could see us on 6/10, 2025, at 3:00 PM. The council meeting was at 5:00 PM that day, so we could not bring it to the council because David was already at work. We told her that we would have David bring the property up to code as soon as possible. On 6/11, 2025, we talked to David, and he explained, we explained to him that trash, abandoned vehicles, rubbish, had to be removed from the property. And on 7/2, 2025, pictures were taken, and he had cleaned up the property in less than a month. And this is why I know that David did not understand that he was being fined $50 a day. So David did not understand about his property, so I'm here with pictures. I don't know if you have pictures or not.
Yeah, I looked at them.
Okay, I'll be at three.
I looked at them, we looked at them.
You can bring them up.
Yeah.
This is today, April 30th, and these were on July 2nd.
What day did he clean the property up?
He started cleaning on.
The 2nd.
Um.
The 2nd of July was done. Yes, what I just looked at.
On 6/11, he started cleaning.
And he had it cleaned up by when?
By, um, July the 2nd.
2nd.
So if David had known that he was being fined all this, I'm sure he wouldn't have let it go that long for all these fines, because he didn't know.
Were there any certified letters sent and signed for?
What different, like, what specifics, like, when he cleaned it up the first time, like, March, and he cleaned it up and said, "Come and inspect," and it wasn't, what, was there things specific that was pointed out to him to say, "Hey, maybe you need to do this, 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 or this?"
No.
Or April?
No.
That's a question for Tamara.
That's what I, I, I mean, I, because he did, he came in and asked, I guess, maybe, so I'm trying to figure out what, what were the things?
That was corrected.
He had multiple cars.
That was corrected.
Multiple vehicles on the property, and that's bad.
Oh, okay.
There's actually two different violations. It's $50 for that, because when he came to the hearing, they gave him seven days for produce registration for the vehicle, and then there was a $50 fine for the abandoned materials, the other abandoned materials on the property.
Can he not cover the vehicles like everybody else does?
That he testified, so in the order, she actually stood, because he testified in the order, so I addressed it that way. Yes, he could have, but the magistrate was the one that made the order to say that he needed to produce the registration.
My understanding is that there was some, possibly some confusion as to how well it was understood. So was what was, what he was being told, you know, was it understood the way that maybe we think it was understood?
So when we go, and this is a general question, so when we give someone and say they're out of compliance, do we give them a list, a checklist that says, "These are the things that are out of compliance," so that they can check those out?
It's a broad thing, because say if I go in there and I say, "That square," and I missed this square, then that's on me. So overall, you give them a broad. You tell them, yes, we do tell them, and I did tell them about the vehicles and the abandoned materials, because he had a bunch of recycled material.
So if we miss a square, do we penalize them the next time we come out and look because we missed it the first time?
So that's why I give it a broad.
Okay.
What we run into with that is, that is the proper way of handling it, I believe, but what we run into is, there's no way, unless they continuously call us and we continuously go out there and check what they're doing, to know if they have satisfied everything that we feel is out of compliance, because it does not specify it. So we had an issue yesterday.
Communication, communication's the big thing. And, and a lot of it, nobody contacts me, so if they don't contact me, I can't talk to them.
I guess, I think the question, though, Tamara, that they're asking, that Mr. Melvin asked is, do we communicate it with them if they do call you?
Oh, yes.
You, specifics, do you communicate specifics with them?
I'll tell them the.
Or do you still just give them the broad?
Well, on this issue, I mean, it's the vehicles, so it was the vehicles, I mean, it was simple.
It was just the vehicles?
And it was abandoned materials, but he had, yeah, I guess it was scrap metal or something. And he has, the property is clear.
Yep.
Well, I seen it the other day.
I guess that's where my confusion is, is when we realized we had to do it, it was cleaned up.
Yeah.
Immediate. So I'm not sure what, that's why I'm confused of where the communication gap was.
There was some misunderstanding and a disconnect, but communication was not.
When we asked David about the permit, one day he was down there, he was here again, the next day, and this is the permit that he got, the very next day, so I know he didn't understand what he had to do. He had somebody helping him at that time, so I just assumed that she was helping him, like, what was her name? Delisa Johnson or something? I think it was Jalisa. Jalisa, she was helping him, so I assumed she's helping him, so. Well, she didn't, if she did, she didn't explain it to me, because if he got. Because she was, she was here at the special magistrate hearing with him. If he got this, this property clean up less than a month. Oh, I understand what you're saying, but. He didn't understand, he did not know it.
Well, that can, that's a little confusing to me as well, because whenever you and I discussed this, Tamara, my understanding was that we were going to meet Jalisa out there one day with Mr. Rolak, and she didn't show up, so I don't, I don't know if we could have assumed that she was helping him, because he didn't, she didn't show up. So we never, we never ended up meeting with her because she didn't show up.
She did come in and bring a couple registrations for a couple of vehicles, but not for all of them.
Do we have them sign anything, just in general, that says, "I understand what I'm being asked to do," where the, the property owner signs it, so that we have proof, what you sign this? Right, I'm just saying, do we have something in place where they sign it? Because sometimes you do have individuals that they can look at a packet of paper and not understand anything on it, but they're just not comfortable saying, "I don't understand this." I build in with that in a classroom setting. I do that with students all the time. They'll say they understand it, but they may not.
I don't know what the legality of that is, that would come from Attorney Jordan. I do know that we're looking at this, at things closer now, to see if there's anything that we can do to prevent issues like this moving forward, because it's the first one.
I just know we do.
Because if I was a property owner, and she met with me, and I have no proof of it, just like one of the doctors, you paid the copay, but you don't have a proof. just like one of the doctors, you paid the copay, but you don't have a proof of it, and then they tell you you owe it.
Right.
And we're working to try and come up with procedures that will help us to alleviate some of these issues moving forward.
So from a legal standpoint, if you attend the hearing and you participate in a hearing, there's a presumption that you understand what was ordered. You have to think of the magistrate as basically a judge and it's on the magistrate to determine if the person sitting before her, usually her, has the capacity to understand what is happening in the hearing. And she did not raise any concerns that there were capacity issues. So if someone participates in the code enforcement hearing, we presume that they understand what they're being asked to do. It would, we don't, we don't have them sign off the order.
I guess I just don't allow presume and assume. Those are, those are two words that are cloudy to me. So that, that's what I'm concerned about. If we're assuming something or we're presuming something, there's no, there's no room for doubt there. I mean, not, not questioning the magistrate.
I don't think that's us, but that's.
Right, I'm just, that's what.
You're questioning the magistrate.
That's why I don't understand that. Like, is there not proper ways of having an individual sign a document? I mean, I can't go into a, a car lot and buy a car and you just assume that I have the money to pay for it. I have to sign a document saying I'm going to pay the bill.
What are you going to do with ninety percent of the owners that don't show up to these hearings? I think it's really rare that we have to actually show up.
To me, that's a signature in itself or another communication issue. Are they getting the letter or, because we already had that issue before.
We were going to send that notice.
Right, that we were not sending certified letters. So how do we know, they even know there was a meeting? Because we've had that just in the last two months.
This is a vacant lot with a mailbox on it.
With a shed in the back.
Shed in the back. I don't know how he gets mail. How you get mail from the mailbox?
Yeah.
That's it. It's a vacant lot, so you don't know if anybody went there, took it out of there or not. I don't know how it's done, but anyway, that's a vacant lot with a mailbox on it.
A certified letter is left and you can't get down, they don't leave a certified letter, they leave the.
We give the certified letter for the notice of violation, so they do, and if they do, if it gets returned, I typically will do a certified letter and then I post the property, the property as well.
So you physically go to the, the property and put something there?
And we go by what's on the property appraiser. So if they have five, six, six, and they'll pay on a property appraiser, that's where the, that's all I have for the certified mail. The magistrate would not have, if I didn't, when we do the steps correctly, they wouldn't have gave the order.
I'm just, from a legal standpoint, how do we?
Now, the order is certified, but most time they may get returned as well, especially if it's a vacant lot.
So how do we, from a legal standpoint, how do you proceed with something if you don't know the individual is aware that we're proceeding? But how do you?
As a practicing attorney, we are expected to be able to evaluate the competency of a person that we are interacting with, whether we're representing them or we're dealing with a opposing party or in this case, you know, the magistrate is sitting in a capacity of judicial proceeding. Um, she has an obligation to evaluate the participant's competency. And if there were no concerns raised at that time, then he did not understand what the hearing was about or what was being ordered, the magistrate will make an oral announcement generally at that hearing, followed by a written order that gets mailed out to the participant.
At any point during that hearing, just, just a question of curiosity, I know he had a representative here speaking for him tonight, but he's also verbally spoke out a couple of times and said things to us. Did, were you asked to say anything? Did you understand what was going on?
Said him, who is him?
The judge.
The magistrate.
The judge, he said nothing about moving the cars, he said nothing.
The patent law firm, I saw how they actually retained, they sent different lawyers.
Yeah, it could have been a man.
So it was a man?
It was more, um, I wasn't at this particular hearing, um, but like I said, he was able to participate, so I don't know that there were any red flags raised at that time.
I got red flags, yeah, I know.
Because if he didn't know anything about a car then, then, you know, that's where we need to improve the system's state specifics.
But he already knew about the cars, right?
And then it's presented to the magistrate. So Karen gets that her own, and she's questioned by, you know, my associate attorney, and she has to put forth her case, just like a prosecutor has to, you know, put their case. He almost kind of like prosecutor, she has to provide photographic evidence of the non-compliance. She has to provide these specific municipal ordinance that they're in violation of. We have a very good process that works.
We ha, and I sit in on these and it's very formal. There's nothing informal about it. So he could not have understood what was going on.
Did he speak at the hearing?
I don't remember. When, when did he have the hearing?
Or did Jalisa speak? Do you know?
Come to the front, Ms. Robinson.
Yes, I was, I was here with him at the time and I could tell that.
Thank you. And I have been talking to the person. And I know that he, he did not understand what it was all about, okay? Even in the beginning. Now, I don't know if he had something written down, what he was supposed to do. I never saw it. And he said he never got it, he got these things. You cannot just tell people what they're supposed to do sometimes and not give them something they can hold in their hands, okay? And a lot of people have to have that paper, have to have it in their hands. And I hope y'all understand that, okay, before they can understand what's going on with them, okay? So I am here, yes, and I, I came here before. You remember, on your behalf, that was when Jalisa, Jalisa, yes, came with him. And she had some documents, okay, and she had taken some pictures. So, and I thought everything was clear up until he came to my house and spoke to me about it. And at the time, when this lady, I'm going to say that, you know, she would follow through with it. So I don't know really where the first confusion started, but whatever we do, okay, and we want people, you know, to follow through, it has to be in their hands, okay? That's in their hands. Never give this man anything just to be done without something written in it and he can see it. So I, I am, well, as y'all know, maybe some of you. I taught students, okay? That was special after I had taught maybe about ten or fifteen years. And then I taught students that were not like me or you. God made them, okay? So we have to give them special. And I'm asking that, y'all do it, isn't it? Some special teachers, because he needs it. You have any questions to ask me? I'll drop the camera. Thank you. I, I don't, anyone?
I don't, I just, can we use this as a learning process and to fix whatever we might have that's a problem with communication if we have one or?
I'm looking at the order right now. It's pretty detailed. I mean, paragraph eleven states that Jalisa Brown and the property owner David Lorenzo Rolack were present at the hearing. They were sworn in to testify. David Lorenzo Rolack testified that the cars are awful. Jalisa Brown testified that the abandoned materials, junk and trash have been removed or are in the process of being removed and will be completed by eight thirty, twenty twenty four. Brown stated that a lot of the debris has been removed, but that testimony was repeated to officers on one. No evidence is offered from the records to prove and respond and add corrective violations. That means that they didn't bring any photographs or other evidence to the magistrate to consider.
Were they told to do that? Were they told to do that?
Yeah.
We cannot advise property owners on what they need to do.
So we're not allowed to say this. These are some of the things they might ask for. But we can't, like, just not tell them exactly what to bring, but just say, these are the things they're going to examine.
It's up to the property owner to take the proper counsel.
But also, if they say they did it, then someone should follow up and check.
So Tamara goes out immediately prior to the hearing and takes photographs. And so that, that's the evidence that was presented to the magistrate that these folks here justifying, saying that these things were done and Tamara had photographic evidence. Either the day of, the day prior, the day of.
The day of.
Um, showing that these issues had not been remedied. So our, our photographs showed they were not compliant. They stated that they were, the magistrate found that our photographs proved that they were not in compliance with the city code.
Does the photographs have dates on them?
Yes.
Ms. Floyd.
So what kind of photographs do, did Jalisa have then? Because here we got conflicting photographs.
I mean, if y'all want to go to the expense of, of retaining counsel for people that you're going to write before your code enforcement case, because that is something that you can consider, the cost is going to be, be extensive and that's not a cost that you'll be able to cover.
I, I don't think, I think what we're, we've learned, and I'm going to let Ms. Floyd, she's patiently waiting to speak. I think what we've learned as, you know, stated is communication. There may be some different levels of communication, but we need to make sure that we've exhausted all alternatives of communication with people.
And we want people treated fair.
Uh, Ms. Floyd.
And that's what I want to say also. I ride around, enjoying, I drive around and I look at people's property and what they have, you know, on it. I'm not an enforcement person, okay, but I can see. So I think we need to, um, maybe make some amendments or some changes in this, yes, adjustment in this code enforcement. Okay? Because I have a lot that I, that I know. And sometimes I came to y'all once before.
Told us to do it, clean the east side.
You remember that, don't you?
Yes, ma'am.
East side, yes, ma'am. Yeah, you remember that. And I came to you, I didn't, I didn't come to you with, you know, arrogant voice. I just came to you to see and take a good look at East Seventy Seven. A good look. You can't just ride by, okay? You have to take time and you have to look. And I've been in this community since I was seven years old and I'm ninety-four now, okay? So I know, I know what has been done. And it's almost a disgrace. I came here before this board, I don't think, you know, not even, some years ago. We changed Martin Luther King, changed that street to Martin Luther King, to honor him. What does it look like now? Have you seen it? I don't believe y'all have seen it.
Oh, yeah.
They're on, and they're on this list.
And we're having, and we're having, um, um, what we, what we have to, yeah, with rope, pepper, food, things. You know what I'm talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Why don't we write some, that we can, we have money for East Seventy Seven, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I, I have not done what I said I was going to do. I will be doing it soon because my time is not long, okay? And I don't want to do that. I just want y'all to look on the east side of Seventy Seven and see what needs to be done. Write these grants. I see you write grants for this and this and that. And who was that woman that wrote these, all those grants? Help write the grants.
The one from Melvin that used to come, yeah.
Not you? I write some.
He's talking about.
While I'm talking, I'm going to say this too. I think you came to help us write grants for some, right? That was a few years ago. We gave you a lot of information, you did. Gave you a lot of information. That was East of Seventy Seven. And what has been done?
Jurisprud missionary, that was fixed my financial grant. I just submitted, I'll take and work on theirs.
That's one. You should have maybe about ten.
I, I, I've worked on three this year, so Sylvania, AME, and Merlin.
And we still got to work on the streets. Yes, the streets.
So as far as the streets go, um, we have Bennett Drive resurfacing that is currently getting ready to go out to bid. So Bennett Drive resurfacing will start construction within probably a few months. Okay, we also have applied for, just for, just FYI, for you, because you wouldn't know this unless you were here at the meetings. We have applied for, um, well, currently Peach Street, um, drainage and resurfacing is being done as well as the lift station. We also have, um, applied for a grant with DOT for, um, Pecan from South Boulevard North to Church. So we're just waiting for approval for different projects and we're hoping that we end up getting them.
But, but we, we haven't done anything about MLK.
Not yet. We have applied, we have applied for MLK through DOT.
I hope I still do.
I hope so too. Um, we have applied for MLK at the same time we applied for Pecan. MLK did not get approved, um, Pecan did not get approved last year. But we went ahead and this year we have applied again for them. So we're just waiting for approval and hopefully we'll know if one of them gets approved by the end of this year. So we are working on them. It's just time. It takes time.
I drive down those streets and when it rains, hey, you know what happens. So I hope I do not have to come back.
Yes, ma'am.
With what I plan to come back with for, for East Seventy Seven, okay?
Thank you.
Because I'm not coming by myself.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, and I think mayor and council, I think ultimately, um, what we have discussed in the past is trying to get properties cleaned up, not necessarily foreclose on them and take them from people. And, um, I believe from what the pictures show is that they have cleaned up the property. So that's maybe what the discussion.
I think that is, I mean, we've heard lots of discussion on, on this and I, we, we pretty much know where this is going. So we don't have to really sit here and be surprised. Uh, when you look at the request that's in here, I think, um, the attorney fees is around, and that's not to date because that's only, that's not to date. Yeah, and, yeah, nineteen twenty-one, twenty, but you're talking a total of about forty-two thousand. So the question is that his property has been cleared up. Legal fees have to be paid for the work that's been placed on there. I don't know what that time period will look like from that date.
It's hard to be much because, hey, I met.
Last month.
Yeah, last month and based on our discussions, I advise my staff not to take any further action on the case until they can have the opportunity, I'm going to the council. We had had some difficulty getting Mr. Rolack served. I mean, we're in the trade of living at one point because we had so much difficulty getting him served. Uh, so. So case is still in its infancy. There should not have been any additional work done last month. But as I'm listening to all of this, and one of the things that I was tasked with for last month or the month before was creating some kind of standard policy or procedure for you all to follow to consider requests for a waiver of fines. And next on the discussion that I first, now I'm gonna make your recommendation to you, it will cost you more because it will require an additional proceeding before the magistrate, but I think they need to go back before the magistrate before they come to you all. And I think you need to have the magistrate make a recommendation to you to make an additional finding on the property's in compliance. There, the magistrate is the one that heard the case.
And we don't need to buck the magistrate in all these cases, basically, is what she's asking.
Yeah, the magistrate, I could get, and I agree with it.
That's what I was afraid of. Yeah. He gets paid one way or the next, whether, whether he do or don't. So I think we can come up with our policies. Yeah. That's gonna help us, because we found these last two and we just wanted to make sure that we had some things in place to prevent us from always having to hear these cases. But have you, do you have the, have you drawn the policy up for us?
Just like a skeleton of it, based on some other medias that I've looked at that do bring cases back before they're either due to credit for support or their magistrate to make the findings of the property's in compliance. Some of them do this routinely on every case. So they, they give the order in place and then they monitor the case and they follow up.
And then we don't have to play magistrate.
Right. Correct.
Which is probably a good thing. I didn't go to school to be an attorney, so.
I think that's a better practice for y'all, like I said, because the magistrate is the one that heard the case initially, the magistrate is the one that made the finding about compliance. And so the magistrate is really the most proper person to determine that the property is in compliance and the exact date it came into compliance. And then they can make a recommendation to the council to waive fines, you know, through this date or whatever the recommendation would be. I think it would cost a little bit more, but I think what's missing in the fact of course is that you all don't have, you're almost sitting in a pellet capacity that you don't.
We don't have all this documentation. Right.
But you're our lawyer. You ought to be able to come up with something besides us having to go back before the magistrate.
I mean, that's honestly the most logical solution is to take it back before the original client.
The person that got and saw it.
So in the case, if we, just say we did send Mr. Rolack back to the magistrate, that's gonna make this attorney number continue to climb.
Yes.
It's gonna continue to make that fifty dollar a day continue to climb.
Yes.
So then he's gonna be back in front of us with even more money owed, with the possibility that this magistrate may say the exact same thing he said this time.
Well.
And that it's in compliance, but these are your fines because legally they're your fines. So that's, that's my concern.
But then we get a legal something.
Got the legal thing now.
I would like to see this policy in place, but I, I would like to see something developed.
A framework.
But at least develop for future issues that we may have. I'm hoping after today we, we will have some things worked out, but.
That's what we said we would do with Dr. Woods' case when you said the same thing, that we need to put a framework together. I think you could do it because for me, this is the same conversation with Dr. Woods.
It is.
You've said the same thing and I, I've heard the same thing. So, and you've heard us. I think you know our feelings on this now. I think you do. So when you make your framework up, you're gonna, sure, you're gonna do the legal side of making it up, but now I think you hear the heart of us saying, we really don't want to take property. We, we really want the end result and we really want the fees, the attorney fees, the legal fees to be paid. And then we really want a documentation with somebody to sign and saying, you saw this. And, and Tamara has to go through this same cycle over and over saying, well, I did that. I did that. I did that. And, and then we get here and there's still cloudy stuff. There's no cloud when there's a signature. There's just never a cloudy issue.
Well, I think she's trying to, she's got a way to, to take the cloud away, is to go back before the same magistrate and then it's done.
I think she's got it. I think she's heard us and I think she's heard this case, what, you've heard it, us say this, what, several times now. And your last words with Dr. Woods was, we're gonna keep doing this until we get something in order. So I think you've heard it enough to, to, we can almost anticipate a time now for a framework to be produced.
I'm hoping that you all are not on the same page.
That's right.
I'm getting very, very different.
I, I don't see a difference.
What you mean, not on the same page?
We're, we're playing magistrate. None of us went to law school and we haven't seen anything, and this isn't against you, I'm just stating the obvious, we haven't seen what the magistrate has seen. And that's what she's trying to keep us in line to do the right thing, go back to the magistrate who saw it originally and let them say, yes, it's in compliance. I've looked at it today, it's in compliance, but it's the stuff that we don't see and we're trying to play attorneys and we're not attorneys.
I think the bottom line is, we need to make sure the people that own the property understand what they have to do to clean it up and the timeline they have to clean it up. And I'm, I'm saying, some people may understand that, but all people don't understand that. That's the problem here.
But the magistrate is the one who heard it and we didn't.
And go specific instead of.
And the magistrate works for us.
And this, this never people put under oath to represent the property owner.
Right.
The property owner and, and they allow their representative to speak on about the property.
But that doesn't mean he understood it. He just stood up there. And it's so formal, if I didn't have the paperwork in front of me, sitting out there, I wouldn't understand it.
I just, I, I think we have a sensitive case again before us. We do need to get something in, that we can.
Soon.
To get, so we're gonna keep, continue to keep having these issues.
I can tell you that there were definitely cases that have been sent to the attorney for, or actually sent to the special magistrate that I would not have approved to go to the special magistrate. I would have made sure that there was more information before that happened. And so I think that if we are able to, and Tamara and I have gone over a lot of stuff in the last year, and we continue to go over stuff, I think that being able to take care of stuff before it gets to the point of the special magistrate and sending it to the special magistrate when you know there is no other alternative is what we have looked at doing moving forward. And so that's what we're working on, and that's why I said that earlier. Those are things that obviously, once we look into those things, we have to run by Attorney Jordan to make sure that we're not going against our code or going against legal proceedings. But it just so happens that there are cases that have gone to special magistrate that didn't necess, that did not, could have been, I feel like, resolved prior to that point. But they went and some of them before I was put in the position I'm in, and they bit, they went to the special magistrate. And that's why we're where we are now with some of the cases. So I think that some of that can be resolved moving forward.
Sure.
That doesn't take care of tonight, though.
Right. There is a gentleman in the audience, if you'll come to the podium, sir, Mr. Jared. And if you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Gerald Lenz from the Mug on Main, Eight Twenty-Nine Main Street. I would just like to say, first of all, thank you for everything you guys have to put up with. I don't know how Tamara does all this. I mean, she, we talk occasionally. If there is something that is a problem, take a picture of, sorry, take a picture of it and put it on that page with, this needs to be addressed. This is your amount of time you have to solve this in. And do it on each one of the items that's a problem. If it's a broken down car, put the picture of it. If it's a stack of metal that you want hauled off, take the picture of it. Put it on that page, the date and time it needs to be done by.
I think she does that. Do you do that?
I'd say she may. I don't know.
I, I send the picture of the violation.
Got you.
And they get a copy, if they come to the hearing, they, they get a copy of the documents that were entered into that.
But if, if, if it was done that way on each individual item and Mr. Rolack signed it, then it's his responsibility. He knows about it.
Signature.
So that, that individual item, he, I mean, it sounds like within a certain amount of time, he took care of everything that needed to be taken care of.
After he understood.
And we appreciate that.
I think the.
Mr. Rolack, if there is anything I can do to help you out, if you need tarp to cover a car or anything on that property.
Get a car and lawn.
All right, then.
I think the bigger question is, after they left, the magistrate and everything, maybe in his, he didn't understand that from that day it was gonna be fifty dollars moving forward. So they're casually going along until they got the, Ms. Robinson, Ms. Floyd left there, she thought it was over, according to what, and she, she, she was there, I think that's what she said, she thought it was a done deal till we came back to her and said, hey, they're charging me fifty dollars a day or something. So I, I just, I don't know, that's, the, the, the point is, I think it's the fees. It's the forty thousand dollars worth of fees that have accumulated, maybe fines, that have accumulated. That's the bigger piece here. That's the, that's, that's the question tonight is, is the fines. If, if the city is going to have lenience with him on his lack of understanding of it, we, we don't negotiate our attorney fees, but we have considered some of the fines.
Well, and also now we've made public that our process is flawed.
Sure.
Not by any one person's doing, it's just a process that needs to be looked at.
And not necessarily, not the legal process.
Right.
On the, as far as once it goes to the special magistrate. That's all legal. So that's not for me to decide. That's an attorney or a judge that does that. But the steps prior to that, we're working on.
And she's doing what the steps are currently are.
She's doing what she's been told to do.
So she's doing, yeah, she's doing what we've asked her to do.
Yeah.
Is there anything the council can do with these fines today? Fifty dollars a day, whatever you hear that you did not know about.
I'm, I will be honest, I'm purposely in favor of eliminating those fines because it's not something that we've paid out and it's not something that's been paid in. It's just paperwork.
Is that a motion?
The attorney's fees, we've done that before, where the attorney's fees had to be paid because it was a process we had to go through and the city had to pay it, so therefore the individual has to pay it. But the other fee, that forty thousand dollars hasn't cost us, but nothing's come out of our coffers with that forty thousand. So I'll make the motion that we eliminate the forty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars with the understanding that the attorney's fees must be paid.
And I'll second it.
It's moved and second. Call for discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Attorney, uh, Jordan, is there anything that you can do to eliminate some of the fees for this? Is there anything that you can do? You can't?
No, because I, I already have to pick my staff out for this.
Oh.
Now, Dr. Woods, did you go out, did you not, did you freeze some of your fines for her?
Yep.
So how much are your fines?
Uh, so.
As of.
Through May thirty-first. June, there was another hundred ninety-two dollars expense. Some of that's probably in the process fees, because like I said, we draw and we're paying process. So we had to make multiple attempts. And every time I have to have a summons, attempted service, it's forty bucks every single time I go out to try to deliver it.
So it's a little over two thousand?
Yeah.
Can he make payments to you on that or does he have to pay all the time?
She's been paid, yes.
Oh, it's the city.
So is that, is that something that you can work out with Mr. Rolack?
A payment plan if the council would like to.
Behind closed doors?
That's not a problem, yes. Attorney Jordan, can you tell me, I just have this question, were, were the, was he being served at the vacant property?
We, so you had, you had these for, you had to do your multiple search of Lexis. We had to make the request about statistics because we attempted service at the property address multiple times. We attempted service at addresses that we were able to pull off Lexis. I mean, we were getting to the point where we ran attempted constructive service because he was not able to be located by law enforcement. I don't know how else to put that.
We don't contact next of kin or anything like that. We don't have a way of doing that, right?
It's.
Yeah, that's what I do, unless it's, unless it's.
Okay.
I try to find other locations that he might be, or the eight one might be, he's not the first one that we've had in the county.
He doesn't turn in.
But that's where a lot of the costs come in.
Did you serve him on the vacant lot or in person?
He still hasn't been served.
Pardon? Pardon me?
He still hasn't been served.
Can you work with, with them on that portion?
Yes.
And to get their additional, I thought she said one ninety-two fifty, but just to clarify, that final balance. Okay?
Ms. Robinson, you get with.
And get it in writing.
Absolutely.
Okay? All right. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thank you, Mr. Rolack.
Two thousand one thirteen seven.
Um, the next agenda item, FDLS Old City Hall Grant, final report.
Mayor Counsel, Ms. Heather Lopez is in attendance tonight to speak with you about the final report for the Old City Hall.
Yes.
So this will complete the grant for the remainder of the existing conditions assessment and rehabilitation plan for the Old City Hall. These were the components that we had to pull out of the grant in the first phase due to a rise in cost on the contractor's side. So, so that includes your mechanical, electrical, mold inspection and ADA compliance.
Okay. Any questions from counsel while she's here? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Mood second.
Mood second. Any discussion? No? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you, Heather, for your work.
And Mayor Counsel, I know it was discussed last month, but we actually are working on an art, I'm sorry, a request for, I'm sorry, an invitation to bid for the mold remediation at the Old City Hall.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, parking space lease. And that's a discussion.
Yes, Mayor Counsel, Ms. Jeanette Rathburn would like to speak with the council tonight regarding the parking, the city parking lot there at the Mug on Main and Paradise City, which is her business, and she could station that parking area.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette Rathburn. I am the owner of Paradise City, thirteen thirty-three, South Railroad and Chipley. So I am requesting to lease the eight parking spaces on behalf of not only myself, but the Mug on Main, the business that will replace Sister Suites, the salon that's coming also in the building that is owned by my landlord, and any other business that comes within that building, and my building and the adjacent building, like the Mug on Main, the church, all that. On behalf of them, so that we can have substantial parking for our visitors, because at this time, which I have submitted some photos, a lot of the parking is being taken up by food truck vendors, employees, Chipley Station employees. So at the times that I personally am open, because I'm more of an entertainment type thing for children and adults, the hours that I'm open is also the hours that Chipley Station is open. So I'm being reduced on the parking area that I have, that's convenient for my guests. So I have submitted some photos that shows the repeated vehicles that are in the same spots at the same time. And those are typically food truck vendors that are taking up that space. So the guests that I have are usually, like I said, children and adults, but are having to walk from both ways, such as the park or even behind our building at the bank, the city parking at the bank, or even at the bank during my office, my business hours. So they're having to walk around in the dimly lit parking that we already have, because the lighting is not the best. And we were talking about special children earlier. We do cater to a lot of autistic individuals. So having autistic children walking. So having autistic children walking those large distances in dimly lit areas around a lot of vehicles makes a lot of parents nervous. So we are getting, not getting some of our repeat customers that we were getting before Chipley Station opening, even during the day on like Saturdays when those people would typically come in early mornings because Chipley Station is already starting to get busy, you know, at lunchtime. So we're seeing a reduced, um, repeat business from some of those people. We are, as employees, where there's only two of us, it's just me and my daughter who run it. We park as far away as we possibly can, and even in the alleyway. But I don't know if you've driven down that alleyway lately. It's not very safe.
Right.
Um, it's full of potholes, um, but that is what we do so that our guests have parking, but then that parking gets full by other people. And then when you pull out of that alleyway, if you look at that very last two pictures, actually shows when you're pulling out of that alleyway, the, um, vehicles that are parked on South Street in front of Chipley Station, there are bumpers, you're typically right on that line. So, which means I have to pull even further out. So before I can even see, I'm already hoodling out in the middle of the road before I can even see what's coming down Seventh Street. So as somebody that's even walking, because I know two, two other meetings ago, we discussed, y'all discussed possibly putting in a pedestrian crosswalk, um, because, yep, we already discussed the, the line issue. Um, but if I see people walking across from Main Street down the alleyway to get to Chipley Station, but that whole area seems a little unsafe and dimly lit, and now you have the, the issue of being able to pull out of the bank parking or the alleyway because of that right there. I know that wasn't part of my parking lease, but that just shows that we're making an effort to try to park, to free up spaces, but then again, it's putting us in jeopardy as well. So not only that, it's not the, the easiest thing to walk across, especially with me replacing.
That alleyway that you're talking about, the building that's on the backside?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't realize there was parking like in that alley. I thought it was a one-way street.
So there's, there's a few parking places.
Behind the salon, behind the bells.
Yeah, the salon. So we're actually, as, we're take, we're really taking spaces from the salon because the salons, so we try to park to where it's too, like Saturday, I pulled in front of somebody so that, because I knew I wasn't going anywhere, so that there would be another space for, if they had a guest that come through as well, because I know their parking is limited. Although they, you know, it's a little easier to get there from the empty parking lot across the street from them, but I don't want to take anything from them either. And then there is one parking spot that a bank employee, um, uses because they have accommodations. So we don't want to park there either. So there is limited space back there, but we do park right there.
So in this picture that has July the first, five twenty-three PM, second of, it's a, it's a daylight picture. I think it's the third.
Second to the left.
Yeah. Those, your business is on that wall, right there, right there. So are, are you referencing the parks that's here on this?
So, um, July first, the five twenty-three, I think there was supposed to be two photos. And one just shows that the entire wall, that, um, the one that where you can see all the food trucks and the parking where the van is and there's a car. I can tell you right now that at least three of those vehicles belong to food truck employees.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. I said, you're talking about these.
Yeah, that's the eight parking places that I would like, that would be adjacent, that would be great for us. Yeah, so.
Yeah.
And we talked about, he knows, when we talked to, um, Chipley Station, but we specifically, I asked them for their employees to park, and they're not, and they're not.
And we can address that. We can definitely address that because they said in a meeting that they would make sure that they did park across the road.
And that's not being, and you said you would get yours, and you've done that, I believe, right? Y'all have all parked away that I've seen.
I have been, you'll, once in a while, we'll be parked in front of the food truck employees. Yeah, some people just unload it.
Right.
We accommodate that. We, we step to that agreement.
Yes, and I've seen that.
I mean, it was verbal.
I've seen it, yeah, but it-
Just to be clear, because obviously tonight we've got quite a bit of verbal confusion with several topics. When they told us that, when they agreed, or we agreed, that their employees would park across, are the food truck people their employees? So there may be a gap in communication there that they didn't tell them that they needed to park over there too. Not saying that it's justified. I'm just saying as far as communication.
And I definitely can reach out to them.
And they've stopped serving lunch too, is from, they've stopped, they were down to one food truck now. They've bought, now they've gotten a couple more in, but we don't know how long those are gonna last at this point.
So where are we at on redeveloping that entire parking lot? Because I brought up several years ago about just closing that portion of railroad because it just runs into another street. It's just a pass through. And make all that huge, one big rail, uh, parking lot. And I know the railroad owns out into the middle of that street, so that's gonna come into some negotiation with them.
So we have had an engineer review the, um, to look at the parking lot. They've come up with some, a couple of different options and plans for us. It does not include closing the road because in the last council meeting, the council did not seem to be in favor with moving forward with the complete overhaul of the parking lot. This was just something to try to correct the issue and come up with a few more parking spaces. Um, and we are currently working on that. So, um, we're gonna continue working on that. And then as far as lighting goes, we are working with, you know, to put up at least one more light. If not, we'll see how that goes.
And we took down a tree that was covering the light.
So we are, we are, we're working on the lighting. That's still not, doesn't address the question at hand, but just I wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that.
Because I know when we leased the Chipley Station, there's fences around those spaces that they've leased. So if we lease these other spaces, who's gonna be responsible for monitoring to make sure the person parking there is the person that works in that particular?
Who's gonna police it?
Who's gonna police it? Because we don't have the guys to do it.
It won't be, because it's not a city.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that we would necessarily police it.
Right.
Um, but we, as business owners, have agreed that we would pay for the signers to put up in place that says these are designated for this building. If we were approved that, that we would pay for that out of our own expense. Um, I do know that, um, my landlord has some plans that will, um, ultimately make that a sidewalk, but it would make y'all's parking spaces have to back up some because of, um, his, his-
They won't be able to do that. We own the parking lot.
No, I'm talking about, well.
They won't be able to build a sidewalk out into our parking.
No, you're not. No, that's not what I'm saying. So like, he's gonna have a wall. I don't know if, which means if somebody pulls into your parking space, they're gonna hit his wall.
Right, if they're parking stops there.
There won't be a but. I don't know. I just said, I don't know the plan, but I'm just saying-
I'd like to see him do something with the building that he's supposed to do with the CRA.
He is currently, um, he just recently framed the, uh, Bella's line, so I don't know if y'all have the numbers, but he's working. Um, that's all I know. I'm just saying there's like, there's, we're trying to make a walkway to go from our building all the way over to Chipley Station so that if people want to go back and forth, they don't have to go into the thing. But like right now, I think he was gonna ask, I think he was gonna petition, but I can't speak for him. I'm just thinking ahead.
Do you believe that, um, it's possible that if we are able to, um, get Chipley Station to work with their food truck vendors, employees, um, to make them park across the road or, or, you know, on the other side of the, um, green space? Do you think that that would help with the parking? Because what I'm, I'm asking because what I'm seeing in the pictures and hearing is that a lot of it seems to be, a lot of spaces are being taken up by-
I asked, I asked Steve that when I was in there one time, and he told me that Leadbitters is a, a veteran that has a dog, but if he parked over by the museum, there's no, the distance was the same, but he was not willing to even discuss it with him.
But Leadbitters was also bringing in three trucks.
Yes.
They had multiple vehicles.
Yes.
So Juniors, um, I wasn't gonna call it food truck names, but brought it up. Juniors, which was the green truck that was there, every, they had like five or six employees. Every one of them had a different vehicle.
Yeah.
So, and they, the, um, if you look right now, like, like I said, there's three vehicles that park directly in front of me. So the only thing is, is the only reason why I was prepping leasing versus going in and just saying, hey, let's all food truck vendors park somewhere else, is that if you, you know, look on the days where they only had two food trucks, entire parking lot was full.
Their employees are parking there.
But the entire parking lot's full. That's all full. I, there's like literally no safe place where you'd walk children from there to my place. Now, y'all don't know this, but I actually selected my, my building, my location because Chipley Station was coming. So for this to be a hindrance to me is actually really hurts my heart.
Well, they're like-
I thought, oh, great, food trucks. This is gonna bring in lots of people and things like that. And I am getting foot traffic from it, which is great. But, um, our, our business model has changed a little bit since we opened. Because again, we're, we've learned that we actually, um, are a great environment for autistic individuals. So I know it's a strange concept. I don't know if you've ever looked at it, if you've ever been in there. It's a strange concept, but cats are a huge deal to autistic individuals. And that's why I'm trying to find a safe space for them to build and come in and visit us.
Okay, but the problem is right now, these, this part of the building, there's nobody in it. The ones that hadn't been finished, just east of you, you know, there's nothing in there right now. So what happens when-
Bella's line is at the end.
Okay. Bella hasn't, have they opened yet?
No, they, they just framed it in.
That's my point. That's my point. Okay, then you've got two others. So then you're gonna have Bella and two others, and then?
Yeah, but, but that's why I said it's for all of us. We're all gonna be open at different times.
I'm just saying that are they gonna come back and say, we want the other ones across? Because we get, you see?
Yeah, that's why I wanted to try to figure out a way, and I, I don't, I don't want an answer today.
I think we need to have a conversation.
Again?
Uh, uh, again, as a good conversation, uh, not just with the Chipley State, you know, not their, just their employees, but the food truck services. Because, um, and, and, and I think we need to clarify what's, what's happening based on these pictures here. And so i- if it doesn't get better, then maybe we have to do something to help with relief for them. Is my thought, but-
And we could have signs that say customers only for, you know.
Yeah.
So do you have any, any idea on this design effort of the parking lot? Of how we're gonna do that as far as, because one of the things is, when she's wanting eight spots leased, and we end up redoing it and we get six spots, or we get ten spots, I don't know how they restrip it or repave it. Is that something that we see happening in the very near future? Is that two years down the road, a year down the road?
No, we're, we're looking at doing that very soon.
So is that something where we have the conversation with the food truck company? Move forward on getting this finished while at the same time monitoring this to make sure we don't let it fall through the cracks, to make sure that this is right. Because I want all the businesses to have parking, and I want everybody to get to the stores.
Right.
So I don't want one to get more parking spaces than the other, if we can help it. But I also wanna make that parking lot-
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I didn't want them directly for me, but, but for that building area.
If it came to leasing those spots to the business owner, Michelle, would we have to lease it to the building owner or the person, the tenant lease, renting the building? Or would it matter? Okay, that was my other question, is if it-
Well, if it's our parking lot, can we say who does it, who can park in it? Has a city parking spot? Can we say customers?
So would we need to adopt, if we're gonna, if we're putting a signage down there, but yes, yeah.
But I, and the boys know this, I drive through there multiple times a day, and I've sent videos to Patty just so she can see what's going on. Because when they started out, it was huge. Last Saturday was, it was, it was, the only people parking in there were their employees. There wasn't anybody sitting outside, and I looked in, there wasn't anybody inside. So, you know, we're, I just wanted, I'm watching that because I'm very well aware. I made the request because I knew the parking from the employees would take up everything, and it still is, and that's what upsets me because when you give me your word, that's, your word should be your word.
The Amtrak parking, what was the Amtrak parking lot? That grass lot?
Rena Harrell owns it.
Rena Harrell owns that, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Because I'm just wondering if that's not something, we can kind of go into negotiations with her or something because that would eliminate, I mean, that would give parking for employees. And to me, it would be safe because it's in a fenced-in thing. They can lock their vehicles in there or shut them in there while they're working. So it's got a safety feature to it, and that would get, not only put the employees over there, but it would also open up the parking across the street as well.
But if he would, if he would stick by his word, we wouldn't be having that.
That's right. And that's what's upsetting. That's what aggravated me when they put the fence up without asking.
I personally believe, y'all need to, um, think long-term. You want Chipley to grow, um, and not just fix my problem, but fix the parking situation overall.
Well, that's what the parking study is for.
I'm just saying, like, big, I'm thinking big. I like to think big, so, um, but, and just the situation on Seventh Street, don't forget that.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that wasn't my request, but need to look at that and see where that cars are sticking out and-
It's the problem with it right in front because the way it's striped and there's that, they stick out.
Will they stick out?
It's a perfect place. That's where I parked my motorcycle when I walked.
It's not safe, and I'm sure the chief, um, don't want to increase his accidents back up, so.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rathburn. We will look into it.
Can you keep her updated as well on the process, please?
Sure, yes, sir.
Come on up.
Yes, sir.
That parking situation is scary. Uh, I, I, when they put that sidewalk in, you can still see where the barriers used to be, and it pushed them back. I've been by there several times that there's the entire rear end of an extended pickup truck parked down there. I think a simple solution for that would be to ask them to make that compact car parking.
Only.
Because you go by there-
But that's our parking, not theirs.
No, this is in front.
No.
It's ours. It's still city parking. That's ours, though. That's not theirs.
No, I know, but-
But did he build onto our right of way? That begs the question.
That I don't know. I just know the sidewalk, you can see the barrier spots that it has pushed them back to three feet, which is, it, it, I'm not complaining.
How about compact cars and motorcycles?
Ma'am?
Compact cars and motorcycles.
That'll work.
She took the words right out of my mouth. I just said that.
That would absolutely solve a lot of that problem.
You didn't hear me?
No.
And, uh, with that, I don't have any complaints with them. You know I don't. I've said it numerous times. I appreciate the extra business. We've just gotta learn to work together a little bit better.
And work smarter.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And with that, I want to stress once again, all of you people, all of y'all do a fantastic job, and we appreciate your time and your effort. And I appreciate the fact that anytime we have an issue, there's people willing to talk and help. And I want to thank y'all for that. Police, all of you guys, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jane. Okay, I think we can move on to the final agenda, item number six, which is the proposed annexation.
Mayor and Council, um, we had a, um, individual well business come to me, and, um, he was interested in, he has purchased a piece of property between, um, well, right near South Boulevard and Kirkland. And we, well, Guy and I in discussions and Jane, what we have discussed is, um, the possibility of annexing in, if you'll look at the map that I gave you.
Really good Claire's house.
Annexing in the property that number six is outlined in white. That property was sold to the school board, so the school, that is where we would be contiguous, is that property. So I would need to reach, you know, we would need to reach out to the school board and see if they're willing to allow us to annex them. And the rest of the school is in the city, just not that piece of property that they purchased after the fact. And then his property is number five, which is contiguous to that school board property. Um, he is looking to build four houses off of South Boulevard and a couple of houses off of Kirkland. I think two of them will sit, will inset. They won't all be, I don't, I haven't seen the plans. I don't even know that they're that far in the process. We're just trying to work through this. But it's my understanding would be two facing South Boulevard and two like back behind them. But, um, with that being said, um, we do not have services right there, okay? Um, we have researched it, and what we would like to do is, um, get the coun, get council approval to move forward with advertising permits for, um, doing a new eight-inch water main from South Boulevard across to Kirkland. Our water stops right there at the, um, Kate Smith, so going across South Boulevard to Kirkland and up to Brick, or South to Brickyard. And then, um- Kirkland and up to Brick, or, south to Brickyard, and then, um, utilizing around, and it would be bid outs, we don't know for sure, but an estimate right now is, um, the city putting in sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars, and the developer putting in, um, close to thirty thousand, not counting their tap and impact fees, this would be just for the portion of water line that we're going to be putting in to allow them to build and have water and sewer services.
I want to add it to our tax base, too.
Yes, and then the sewer line, we do not have sewer services over there either, and that's a lot bigger issue, but we do have the ability to, um, there is a sewer line there that is owned by a business, and we, we would like to be able to reach out to them and see if they would allow the city to take that sewer line over, um, and we would be able to utilize that sewer line moving forward to add on those four homes to sewer, and then from there, we would have to look further at being able to do anything with sewer south on Kirkland. That would not be an immediate thing, but getting sewer and water services, water all the way around to Brickyard, and then sewer, um, is already, um, on South Boulevard from Traywood Construction to the school. So, um, there's a lot of ifs, you know, that we have to work through, but we, we would like permission to move forward with that, if the council would like us to do that, and Guy probably has more information on it, but it would allow us to actually, you know, there's a lot of, quite a bit of undeveloped land on Kirkland, and so on both sides, east and west on the side of Kirkland, that could at some point develop, and then we'd be able to at least give them water services, and then hopefully, maybe by that time, we would have something figured out for the sewer as well down Kirkland.
So you need a motion for that?
Yep. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, or none, motion carries. Thank you all for your patience, Senator Attorney Jordan, anything else?
Uh, a couple updates.
You may have somebody in the audience that wants to speak.
Attorney Jordan.
The individual that called in last month asking about, um, waiving their workman fines on a parcel.
West Boulevard.
Yeah. The reasons totally unrelated to the city, that deal, the number four, she was in the old, really not that far, so I just wanted to update everybody on that. Um, I did meet last month with Patty and Guy about the animal ordinance, um, it's going to be a property extensive review, I'm still working on that. Um, I would ask you all to, outside of the, um, specific consideration for the waiver of mine, to really give some thought to what you're looking for in this policy procedure for waiving fines. I do still, I'm getting mixed instructions from you all, um, we don't need any more discussion on that tonight, just be thinking about that, and we'll bring it back up in August, um, we are not going to, I don't think that so to speak, that I'll be able to handle those issues.
Those are the only three?
That's all I can go.
Okay, we'll add them to your report. Someone was in the audience that wanted to share something? Yes, ma'am?
I live on Six fifty-three Garrett Drive, um, I think the city council gave Michael Hooks, or whatever Hooks it was, a permit for Fourth of July. It was shot in the tennis court directly behind my house. Too close. Had it not been for all the rain, would y'all willing to replace my a hundred and four thousand dollars, hundred thousand dollar home?
What did they, I missed the meeting with that, what was the agreement with the Hooks?
Okay, so in the past, um, this is the fifth year that it was done, in the past three years, they have been, um, fireworks were done on church, on the red back.
In the street.
Um, the first year, they were done back behind at the east side of the field, and, of the track, and that was changed due to fire hazards, they were right there next to the, um, trees and underbrush and everything back there, so they have since then been doing it on the street near houses right there, and, um, that was not discussed at the meeting this month, when it was approved, or last month, I'm sorry, when we had a special meeting, the specifics of it were not discussed.
Yeah, we just approved, we just approved the event.
Yes, because the plan was to handle it the same way it's been being handled the last three years, and Chief Richer, due to safety concerns, requested that the road make it closed, so that prevented them, I'm sorry, remain open.
Opened.
Due to safety concerns, and so that prevented them from being able to do them on the street, and so they, we relocated them to the tennis court, which was the safest place for them to be able to do that.
But that was never discussed.
No, none of it was ever discussed.
But it should be next time.
But, yeah, because, see, in, in my mind, what, what does, in my mind, he was supposed to be behind Rolex doing it.
On the track.
On the track.
Yeah, that's not been done.
Not at somebody's home. And that, I'm like, this lady is too close to her house to be doing that.
Do you not agree, Reverend Blount?
Yep, I live right across the street.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I mean, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be, I just know the road situation, with the road being closed, in the center of the road. I didn't know they'd been doing it in the road. I thought they'd been doing it behind the Rolex.
They have been doing it in the aisle, in the aisle, uh, right adjacent, um, to the lunchroom, in the aisle, in that.
They've been doing it right there in the road.
In the loop, the area, yes.
Tennis court is just closed in, and I understand why they probably picked it, because.
Yeah, it's closed in.
It's closed in, and that keep all these people from crowding it, but the middle of the field, and I've noticed almost every year, it pretty much rained, so, of course, Rolex is right across the street, and we can see it up close every year, as a matter of fact, we had two locks cut.
I think that you had two locks cut.
For this occasion, we did. And, uh, it doesn't really bother me, because I think they on that track, I think it was raining, and I think the mud, so I didn't.
I don't mind having it.
They could probably push it in the middle of the field and be okay.
Red at your backyard?
No. No, in the road, I, I wouldn't, I mean, it's just as close to the front part of my house.
And she was here, he can tell you that my kids were screaming. I have three minor kids now, my granddaughter, and he can tell you they were screaming. I'm one of the ones that kept calling, calling the police, six one 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 is what I kept calling. They're literally screaming.
The midfield should be okay, right?
Well, here's my, my only issue, and I had this issue this other day, the concept of that coming to us five days before the event should not happen again.
Yes.
With it being an event that size, and an event that has that many safety concerns, it's not a parade, it's not a dog show, it's fireworks firing off, that needs to be to us by January, so that we can know exactly what the plan is, so the community has time to come in and see, this is exactly how it's going to be laid out, so they can make those plans and know, so she can have an opportunity to say, I don't want that dump right at my back door.
Well, we should know where it's going to be, too. We shouldn't be not knowing. And we may need to take it back to Jim Traywood Park, originally, that's where we used to do a fireworks show, is at Jim Traywood Park, because it was the most safest place to have it.
I think separating me and the tennis yard is a bitch.
That's right.
And if you don't want it in your backyard, what make you think I want it right in my backyard?
Your, your backyard.
And I am the one sun fingers that had been blown up.
Right.
So from that point on, I don't, I could care less, but people could have whatever they want to have, but my God, please don't just have it in my backyard.
I think it's a good idea to put it back over at Traywood Park. Jim Traywood Park.
And we did address the days, we did look at the application, um, the application actually says four to five days, so we'll get that to the council, and we did post a post on Facebook, um, when people call and ask for, we know that now.
And don't most people do it from buildings and not from the ground?
They're, we're going to need to take it probably with the fireworks they making today. From what I've seen, it's not the typical ones that we had back when we grew up.
That's right.
But you're going to probably have to have it someplace that, like we normally do, you pay that guy to be out there in the middle of the field, the cars parked way out in the parking lot, up the street, that's the safest scenario, I'm sorry.
The things that she has in her hand, it was a group of boys, he also stopped them too. He also, he talked to me, he comes straight to my door and talked to me, but those cannons they have right there, they were shooting at one another.
They shot at each other in front of our church, had this gone through it in one of the stained glass windows, our church is nothing but lighter wood, it would have gone up, and this was in front of our church, they came by my house.
The fireworks is getting ridiculous, but.
I'm just, I'm concerned with them being shot over houses, because they're dealing with trampolines, you're dealing with the roofs of people's houses, they may not see it now, but.
Last year was a tent, remember? I came up here last year, last year was a tent.
Right.
They lit my house up last year, I showed him the video.
Oh, yeah.
I think that whole event needs to be discussed before it's approved.
I'll be back.
I think we'll need to rework it and maybe move the location.
And lack of preparation on his part does not constitute an emergency on ours.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Mr. Blount?
All is well.
Yes, ma'am. No, that was mine, the fireworks.
Yep.
Thank you all for your time and attention, this meeting's adjourned.
Wait, I went to, um, check on Ms. Robinson's.
Recording stopped.